It is now seven o'clock. I will call this regularly scheduled city council meeting for the city of Victorville to order. The custom and habit of this council is we begin every meeting first with an invocation. Tonight, it will be led by Pastor Hector Gonzalez from God's Garden Church. That will be followed immediately by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by our Chief of Police, Captain Mark Taylor.
Pastor, we all bow our heads. Our Heavenly Father, we are so grateful to you tonight. We're thank you. Thank you right now, Father, for everyone that's here. We just pray that you would just bless this meeting tonight. Bless the mayor, council members, and we pray that you'd bless their families. Help them in their decision-making. And, Father, because I know even though this meeting doesn't last very long, the decisions that are made can last for a long, long time. We just thank you. We just give you all the honor and glory. Thank you for blessing us with this wonderful country and this beautiful community that we live in. We give you all the honor and glory and praise in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you.
Welcome to all of you. This is an exciting time in the life of the city of Victorville. It's an opportunity for family and friends of not just the elected officials, but everybody who has a stake in the growth and prosperity of this wonderful community. And for you to be here tonight, to participate in the every-two-year process of bringing new council members aboard, I'm sure I can say for all of them, thank you for taking the time out of your busy schedules to be a part of this very important event. The state laws require that we start the meetings first with public comment. It's item one on the agenda. Public comment is that opportunity afforded by state statute for anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council under any subject that is within our area of responsibility and jurisdiction. We ask that you, if you want to speak under public comment, that you fill out one of these white cards that's available in the foyer, and you pass that card to the city clerk. As a general rule, under public comment, the council does not respond to public comment. Obviously, we have no way to be prepared to deal with whatever may come from a question or a comment or a request of public comment. That's one of the reasons for the cards. That gives us the contact information that will be necessary should what you say, or ask, or suggest require that we notify you of meetings to deal with that subject in the future, or whether we might need more information from you, or we might need to communicate with you for whatever reason. So if you want to discuss anything with the city council under public comment, please fill out one of these cards and pass it to the clerk. I have only received one card, and that is from Paul Hendikar, if I pronounced his name correctly.
I'm Paul Hendikar, and I have business in Amerigoza, which they call him Jake Barbecue. I did have Fazoli before. Of course, Fazoli franchisement out of business. I bought worth of $270,000 worth of equipment. At the same time, whether I tried to change the business, and I hired a gentleman to work for me. He came in, and he started working to put the barbecues and everything, do the business all over again. The gentleman came in. He worked about one month with people that he wanted to hire. After one month, he said, "I have to pay salary to my employee. The people I hired, they work outside and inside." I said, "Sure." I gave him money, about $4,000. I didn't have bank accounts, so I had a cashier check. I cashed it, and I gave it to him. He said, "I don't have any account," or whatever. So that was it. Next day, he come in. I asked him, he told me that, "Where are the equipments are, rest of it?" He said, "I took it out because I wanted to make more room for you," and I bring him back. So I just said, "Why did you take it out? You would move it?" He said, "No, no, I feel it in my garage." Fine. And after that, the same day that we talk about employee, we paid half of the employees, I was there, and we put the rest of the money in the envelope for the employees. But when I come back next day, the employee came in to get their money, the money wasn't there. Of course, he was there early in the morning with me. He went to the office, and he took the money. So immediately, I called the police, and I said, "You know what? It happened like this." And they went, the police, the gentleman's name was McLaughlin, and he came back with half of the money. I said, "You know what? I have to pay $2,500 over here." He said, "What is this? You brought me on less than half a thousand dollars, something like that." And he said, "Well, he promised me he's gonna give you Friday." And I told him, "Why didn't you arrest him?" He said, "You know what? It's okay. He's gonna bring equipment, so forth and so on." And next day, I called McLaughlin and said, "What happened? For equipment?" He said, "Well, I talked to him. He sold the equipment to eBay." I said, "What do you mean?" That's what he said. And that was going on, and so forth and so on, until I called McLaughlin and said, "What happened to the money that you were supposed to come in? Why didn't you arrest him? Why didn't you do something that we can find, get it out of him?" He said, "You know what? I have nothing to do with it. I don't wanna get involved with it. That's between you and him. So, and if you called me for something, I'm not denying it." But we had about four employees of mine, which is still there working, that they were waiting for their money. So I had to go call, send me some money. My wife brought some money, cash money, to pay all these people. And it's about six months ago, I called McLaughlin. I couldn't find him anymore, so I talked to sergeant. The sergeant introduced me to deputy, sorry, I forget now. His name is Pratt, C. Pratt. And so he was very nice. We discussed it. He said, "Bring me all the list, which already I gave it to Mr. McLaughlin, all the equipment and the numbers, prices, which I purchased, and all the witnesses." We had about six, five or six witnesses.
Mr. Hendikar, we generally have a three-minute limit to public comment. What is it you're asking for the city to do?
I came over here to tell you that the police is ignoring me. I cannot give the police support.
Okay. The Chief of Police for the city of Victorville is in the back of the room, and he'll raise his hand. And when this is over, if you meet with him in the foyer, he will discuss your issues with the police department.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The only white card I have for public comment. Is there anyone else in the audience who had intended to speak under public comment but failed to turn in a card? Hearing none, we will go to item two, Statement of Election Results by the City Clerk. Bates?
The number of votes given in the city to persons voted for to office of member of the city council was as follows. Mike Rothschild, 9,616. Ryan McEchrin, 8,945. Michelle Medina, 6,147. Bob Hunter, 7,502. Gary C. Douglas, 5,738. Terri Gossett Flint, 5,287. Richard Gleason, 3,339. Rudy Cabrealis, 9,848. Total registered voters in the city, 38,127. Total ballots counted, 27,395. Voter turnout was 71.85 percent.
Questions or comments from members of the council? If not, we'll go to item three, which is Proposed Resolution Number 08172, which if adopted by the city council, would recite the fact of the general municipal election held November 4th, declare the result, and such other matters as provided by law. Is there a motion to adopt Proposed Resolution 08172?
No.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
The opposed? Unanimous. Item four is presentation of certificates of election by the city clerk. Ms. Bates?
At this time, I'd like to invite Council Members Cabrealis, Rothschild, and Council Member-elect McEchrin up to the front of the dais, and I'll issue the certificates
Follow me swear or affirming that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Hill. All enemies foreign and domestic, that you will well and faithfully, with true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution, without any mental reservation, with all the faithfulies, absolute and eternal.
I would now call for the seating of the newly-elected council members. Item seven is remarks by council members, and as a general rule, we will go with the top vote getter first, which would be Councilman Cabrealis.
Thank you, Mayor. And good evening to everyone, and thank you for being here tonight to celebrate with us the change of government, as is done every four years. Well, here, it's every two years, and in our nation, it's every four years. And we have the greatest country in the world. We have a democracy that we protect and we love, and most of us have been in the service, and we do it because we want to protect that democracy in that way of life that we call America. But tonight, I'm very grateful to have been elected to the city council again, reelected. And I'd like to thank my wife, Vicki, for her support, being there for me always, and for her love and caring for me. I also have one of my grandsons and one of my great-grandsons. I actually have about 13 great-grandsons, but we couldn't fit them all in here tonight, so I asked them to stay home. But we do have them. I do want to thank my committee, Tom and Annie. Please stand up. Tom, Annie, Pat, Leslie. Then we have the crews out there, Manny and Louise, and of course, my grandson Frank, who helped with the signs also. So I would like to thank all of you for your hard work and for being there for me, for everything you did for me. Thank you very much. Would also like to thank the voters of the city of Victorville, those who voted for me, those who made other choices, but still, I will represent everyone in the city equally without regard to social or economic status or geographical location in the city of Victorville. Everyone will get equal municipal services or service from the city equally. Again, I've been here for 32 years in the city of Victorville, and I'm very grateful to continue to be of service to our community. I love this city. I'm gonna stay here for a long time, and I hope my grandson's gonna start playing, my great-grandson's gonna start playing baseball. And I watched their grandfather, which is my son, play, and I watched his father play, and now I get to watch my great-grandson play baseball. So I live for that. I love my family and my wife, and we have strong family ties, and that's very important in to stay in age, that we maintain those ties with our families. All my friends that are here, please stand up. Pastor Denton, Pastor Portles, that were very instrumental in getting out the vote for me, Kelly with No Drugs America, and all my friends that are here tonight. Thank you very much, and I will continue to serve the city of Victorville to the best of my ability. Thank you very much.
Councilman Rothschild?
Well, again, welcome to another peaceful transition of government, as not always witnessed throughout this world, but certainly in this country, our election cycles are something to be admired, and the local levels right all the way up to the national levels. And for that, thank you for being here, especially my wife, Jean. You know, the wives especially, and then the family after it trickles down there, they always get, they're rather hypersensitive of a lot, that, you know, we get picked on a bit on the newspapers and public opinions and the blogs and everything else, and they're the first ones out there, understanding, the first to understand that you don't really understand us and where we're coming from, because you're our wives and our spouses. And so my wife is always very supportive of me in that and very angry at somebody that picks on me in the news. So it feels good in the morning when I get up and she's sitting there at the breakfast table with me, and we're perusing through the daily news at times. It's always good. But listen, I tell you, I don't care how long you're on a council. Every time you run, it's a very humbling experience. It truly is. I mean, it might sound like a, "I've been on this council 20 years. I'm starting my next term," and that sounds like, "Oh, yeah, matter-of-fact." But, you know, that's only a matter-of-fact after the votes have been counted. It is very tense, very frustrating, and, you know, the tension that builds right up to election day, no matter where you are in the lineup or where it might be, is really an interesting thing to observe. These seats don't belong to us. They truly belong to everybody, one of the voters out there. And every time we have a campaign, it gives us an opportunity to not only freshen the pot a bit, but also to explain ourselves. And maybe that's one thing, you know, we lost with Terri and Joy not having to run in a competitive cycle, whether it might be an easy election or not. The fact is that every two years, if we're getting out there and explaining ourselves and talking about the city and the things that we're doing, people have a better understanding of that, and that is only good for elections. And that's why we ought to have them every two years and not extend it out four years or so. So with that, you know, we're all, all should be appreciative of that. This is another exciting moment. This city is incredible. The things that we have done and accomplished, second to none in this state in spite of California, not because of California, I might add. And I wouldn't want to be in another spot on this planet and certainly in this state than in Victorville, California, because the next four years are gonna be so exciting, the things, the people that are lining up to do business. You know, the big businesses are always looking for that downturn in the economy. That's when they show up, because they know all of the good deals are there to get there, lay out the groundwork and get started, whether it's the intermodal or the power plant, or some of the other activities that we've got going. It's just an incredible opportunity. So it's an exciting moment. I wouldn't want to be any place on this planet right now than on this city council. And for that, I thank all of the voters in this community, and thank you for your trust in me for another term. It's my, is it my? Oh, sixth term, yeah. So with that, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, my wife.
Newly-elected Councilman Ryan McEchrin.
Well, thank you. I do want to thank you all for being here this evening. This is quite an experience, and a humbling one at that. I am very gracious and thankful to the voters of Victorville who have put their faith in me in sitting in this seat, and I do not intend to take that for granted. I intend to do a lot of good for the citizens of Victorville. I live here. I have a business here. I deeply care about this community, and I hope that I can be a breath of fresh air up here and work with the rest of this council to effect positive change. I do want to thank my wife, Jennifer. She's sacrificed a lot during the campaign, her and my kids. But they were very supportive, and she was a great support to me, and thank you very much, Jennifer. To my family, my parents and my sister who are here tonight, I couldn't have done it without you and all the support you provided in making sure that I was in a position to be able to do this. And I think that I owe you a big debt of gratitude for all that you were able to do to help me get elected. To the numerous volunteers, there are many that aren't here, but there are those that just went above and beyond. Aaron Scott, Bill, I know you're here tonight. I don't know if Aaron's here. I did not see her, but your daughter was my number-one volunteer, there every night, making phone calls for me, and without her, I couldn't have done this. Thank you. To my campaign manager, Michael Orm, whatever this guy told me to do, I did. And when I didn't do what he told me to do, I was always wrong. So he's a smart gentleman. He spent numerous hours of his own personal time to help me get elected, and I'm very grateful and indebted to him. Pilar, thank you for making phone calls for me. Rob Kurth, who not only made phone calls, but got out there and helped put up signs and hung them from weird places off of Burger Kings and traffic lights, which really didn't happen, but it's amazing what you can do with pictures. But there's just so many people that helped out, so many people that gave me great counsel, phone calls that occurred during the campaign, people that sat in pictures, Teresa Yatley, thank you for doing that. I know you didn't intend to be a star in my campaign, but you ended up being one. And just all the tremendous support and financial support that I received from all the contributors out there, that without them, this would not have been possible. I'm looking so forward to working with the rest of the council and being able to do some very wonderful things over the next four years, and I am humbled by sitting in this spot, and I thank the voters of Victorville once again. Thank you all.
Well, Joanne and I got short-changed two years ago. Nobody filed against us, so we missed all of this fun from all of the Q3 got to go through. So I'm gonna give Joanne Almond the opportunity to say a few words if she wants to make up for what we didn't get to do two years ago.
No, we didn't do that.
It's your turn.
Okay, thank you. I just want to say, welcome back. Welcome back and welcome to all of you. This is great. I couldn't help but see Rudy and Mike and Orion get choked up when they thanked their spouse. This job, and I'm getting choked up, this job is a family affair, really. When we sit up here, you're all involved, mom, dad, and man, wife, and children, but I know in my family, it is a family affair, and it's an honor to sit up here. I know we do get beat up a lot, but as long as you stand by your man, and my husband stands by me, we're okay. And I think I'm gonna stop. Thank you all for being here for that.
Well, I get to go last. So the first thing I want to do is I want to welcome my former appointee to the planning committee.
Oh, yeah, he's gotta put a new one.
Have a whole new world of experiences in front of you, as do your wife, and your sister, and your mom, and your dad. But welcome. I want to perhaps approach it from a slightly different perspective. Everybody's touched upon the fact that this is really the public's seat. None of us own these seats. We all have a fiduciary duty, an ethical responsibility, to fill these seats in the most effective way we can to better this community. I want to say to you first, what you read in the daily press is not reflective of the work of this council, the city manager, the senior staff, and all of the 500-plus employees that make up the city of Victorville. We serve a constituency of 107,000 people. When I came here in March of 1963, just a few months after the city incorporated, population was about 6,800. This city today is vastly different than it was when the Tatum family planted their roots and became an integral part of the shaping of this city and really the destiny of the entire Victor Valley. We've all grown. We've all matured. We've all reached levels of success for our city that were not even contemplated when the fathers and mothers of this community started this process in September of 1962. When I first went on the council in 1972, we didn't always have two meetings a month because there wasn't enough business to fill up two agendas. What you will find out now, Ryan, and your wife, and your family, is that this is a seven-day-a-week job. It's not coming to council meetings on Tuesday night. There is a million-and-one committees that have to be attended to. There's 107,000 constituents that expect all five of us to be at every ribbon-cutting, every groundbreaking, every birth, everything that they think is the most significant thing in their life. And although none of us cover everything, it requires a team approach so that we can meet the expectations of this community, legitimate expectations of this community. So over the next four years, you will be involved in things that you never, ever imagined or ever thought of. Some fun, some not-so-fun, some a burden and some a joy. You'll sit through meetings where people come to that podium and tell you what a miserable, rotten person you are, along with all the rest of us. And you'll also have people who will come to the podium and will praise the decisions of the council for the decisions that we make that are primarily focused on creating jobs and enhancing economic prosperity for everybody in this city. There are important initiatives underway, some of which have been underway for a long period of time. They don't necessarily get the glamour and the press coverage that some of us think they should, but they are important initiatives that, at least in my opinion, need 110% commitment to keep them going and to keep moving forward. And I'm gonna mention a few of them. Phenomenal opportunity to transform the 5,000 acres of former George Air Force Base, now Southern California Logistics Airport, not just for the city of Victorville, but for the entire 500,000 people that live in Victor Valley. It's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity that few cities ever get, and it consumes a tremendous amount of municipal resources and elected officials' time. But it is a worthwhile project. It's a worthwhile... it is a worthwhile project, it's a worthwhile endeavor, and it will, over time, transform the Victor Valley, and in my opinion, the entire High Desert, into the primary economic factor in the entire inland empire beyond the boundaries of San Bernardino County. Part of that deals with the initiatives that we've undertaken to build the rail facility, the first phase of which would be the intermodal facility, followed by the multimodal facility, followed by the inland port. These projects of themselves are estimated to create somewhere in the range of 30,000 jobs. Huge, important opportunity that the Victor Valley has delegated to the five elected officials of the city of Victorville. The opportunity to partner up with the Port of Long Beach and the Port of Los Angeles to develop this inland port is unique in terms of what it's going to do for the regional economy of Southern California in terms of goods movement. Huge undertaking. The opportunity to move forward with the development of power plants, former George Air Force Base, takes on a significance beyond just the tax increment generation that results in millions of dollars a year being generated, which are shared with our sister cities and the other taxing authorities in this valley. It's a huge, huge economic opportunity. And if you read the papers, some of us choose not to do that much anymore, but if you watch TV or listen to commentary, you will quickly understand that California is in an energy crisis again. And the governor has put renewable energy at the top of his list of priorities for California. Primary source of renewable energy will be solar. The Mojave Desert has the greatest opportunity for solar development anywhere in the United States. Victorville has committed itself to become the solar capital, certainly of California, and really the western United States. It's a very, very big undertaking, but it is something that will require the commitment of all of us for years and years and years to come. County San Bernardino has adopted a plan to close the landfills on the other side of Cajon Pass. And the current plan is to locate all of the disposal at the existing landfill site on I-15, the pyramid. Some of us have expressed our opposition to Victorville becoming the dump site for this county. The county generates a lot of money for the County General Fund through the operation of that facility, and so we're trying to partner with the county to develop an alternative. Because if we don't, the projections call for 17 pyramids, like the one that exists on I-15. Those pyramids will destroy the economic opportunity to develop commercially along the I-15 corridor. It will destroy the town of Apple Valley's ability to develop the Fausion Road interchange and the E-220 corridor in terms of their economic growth and economic needs. There is a better way to do it, and the waste-to-energy concept, our opinion, is the way to do it. But not everybody agrees. And again, it's an initiative that's been launched, and will take tremendous amounts of time and energy by all of us to continue to pursue those items. So I don't say these things, Ryan, to scare you. I say these things to you and your wife and your family, just so that they'll have a flavor of why sometimes you won't be home for dinner, why sometimes you may be on an airplane going to Madrid, Spain, or Chicago, Illinois, or wherever the particular area of interest needs us at that particular point in time. Because as you and I have talked before, being on the city council isn't coming to these chambers a couple times a month. It is a commitment to the welfare and the future of the city of Victorville. I know you're up to it. You've been involved in all of the important economic and growth decisions of this city for a number of years in your capacity as a planning commissioner. And so you're well-prepared for the new tasks and the new role. So again, I want to welcome you. Don't be timid about asking questions. The senior staff of the city of Victorville is the best there is in this county and beyond. They will be a huge resource and a huge benefit to you if you'll ask them for opinions and guidance. Before we leave here tonight, you're going to have a brand-new task. And the brand-new task is to solve the impasse that exists with the development of the Nisqually interchange. We are having a huge battle with Sandbag for parochial interests that, in my opinion, have nothing to do with the transportation issues that are important to the welfare of the entire Victor Valley. They have to do with the competition for funds, and we have one vote, four votes exist on the other side of the mountain. If anything's going to help relieve the primary issue and concern of cross-valley traffic and congestion, it's the construction of the Nisqually interchange. If we don't construct the Nisqually interchange, town of Apple Valley's bridge across the river is useless, because it doesn't go anywhere. You and I have talked about that, and again, I think you bring a fresh and new energy that will help us deal with those people who would prefer to spend the money over the hill rather than in the desert. So it's a great opportunity. I want to thank your wife and your family for allowing you to do this, because it truly is, as Joanne said, it's a family affair. And you get to go to all the fun things. You don't have to make any of the hard decisions, but you know, as his partner, you get to enjoy the benefits of being the wife of a city councilperson. So, that is what it's all about tonight. It's the peaceful transfer of power that makes the United States the envy of the world. And it is the orderly transfer of power within the city of Victorville, which is without a doubt, at least in my opinion, primary city of the desert, really the primary city of the future of San Bernardino County. It's an exciting time, and welcome, Ryan, to this process. The next, the next process falls again to the city clerk, Spates.
Nominations for the office of mayor are now open.
I move that Councilman Rudy Cabralas, the top vote-getter in the most recent election, be the nominee for mayor of the city of Victorville.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? I move nominations be closed. May we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? It's unanimous? And Rudy, you do not know, after the last two years, how happy I am to give you this gavel. You may think it's light. Let me tell you, two years from now, when you pass it on, it weighs tons. So, welcome.
Well, Terry is going to be a hard act to follow, obviously. But I will do my best to serve the citizens to the best of my ability. And we have all these projects and enterprises that Terry talked about, and we're going to support those. But we also have some challenging times coming ahead of us. Just, we're no different than anybody else in, now in the world, it's a global thing. This crisis is serious, and we're going to be faced with some challenges as a city. And we're going to have to work together as the council to solve these problems and, or challenges that we face, and get over the hump so we can get back to the, bring the economy back and bring back the, our ability to continue to work on those, on those major projects and so on. So I'm honored to be the mayor for the city of Victorville. I know this thing is going to get heavy. Terry, I already feel it in my heart. But thank you once again, and thank you for selecting me as the mayor. On the agenda now, it calls for the, for the mayor to call for nomination for mayor pro tem. It's customary for the mayor to select or make the nomination for the mayor pro tem. And I would like to nominate Mike Rothschild for mayor pro tem. Mike has been, of course, in the city council for many, many years. That's a lot of experience. Some years ago, when he was a mayor and I was a mayor pro tem, we worked together very well. Terry mentioned that there are many, many functions that we have to attend, and we should be there for the citizens that request our presence as the council. When Mike was still working and I was retired, and I was a mayor pro tem, I would take the, all the day events, I would take those. Mike would take tonight events. So I'm going to share those events with Mike, believe me. It comes around. It's important that the city be, have representation whenever we are required to do such at these events for our citizens. So I intend to be there, and Mike will help me to represent the city of Victorville at these events. So I make a nomination for Mike to be our mayor pro tem.
I'll second.
Second. I move nominations be closed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hey, Mike.
I'd like to say a few words, Mike. Just a few. No? Okay, very good. Okay, we now have item number 12. It's a request by Councilmember Rothschild to make an appointment to the San Bernardino Associate in Government, Sandbag.
Beg your pardon? Mayor pro tem.
Mayor pro tem.
Oh.
Here we go.
Already.
Mayor pro tem, okay. Conflict already.
Normally, we would do our reorganization of our committees and assignments two weeks from now, but tomorrow morning is the first Sandbag meeting following this one. And I felt it was important to make this transition. This is one of our big local issues, and Sandbag's, like most state bureaucracies, they, they're not evil, inherently evil, it's just that they have a state or federal level of ideas and priorities that are not necessarily ours. So we're constantly battling that. I'm going to make a nomination here that Ryan had indicated in the campaign that he was interested in the traffic issues. And I think we need a serious change of face there. He's going to be very capable in this, in this role that I'm going to nominate him to, but we need to get down there and interact with the folks down below and remind them that this is an entire county. There's not an up the hill and down the hill, although many times, that's what happens. We have our subcommittees, Victor Valley, five communities, the High Desert Measure I group, if you will, the Sandbag group, which is, which is eight cities. But when we walk down the hill, there's 29 votes down there. And for the most part, unless they're forced to, they don't have to listen to us at all, and they don't. So the only issues that they're tied down to is when the board members remind staff who's the boss. Sandbag works for the cities. The cities do not work for Sandbag. They must do what that board says down there. We're all busy, and there's a very complicated body of information down there, many laws that we'll never understand as well as Sandbag staff people. And they'll put their own nuance or spin to it. And unfortunately, most of us are so busy, and we get so intimidated, myself included, even though at times I get down there on the short end of a 26 to one vote a few times, you've noticed. The fact is that we're so busy that we depend on them to do everything for us, and then go down there and it'll work out smoothly. Well, that's not good enough for the High Desert. Quite frankly, I think we're at a time where we ought to be looking at a cog, a brand-new Sandbag, if you will, up here in the High Desert region, defined primarily about what the Measure I, High Desert group is. That's what I'm hoping that the future will hold for us as I come off this board and a new member comes on. But that new member is going to have a fresh perspective, and all the prejudice that was, I carried on my shoulders sometimes and brought on by myself at times, you know, when I'm a little bit short down there and not understanding their issues, I think freshening of that is going to be good for Victorville. So that's why I'm making this nomination this evening with the, if the council will allow me, and I'd like to nominate Ryan to the new designee, and by the way, we need to do this, because that's the only way you can vote down there, to be our new designee to the Sandbag Board, and also as an adjunct to that, the member on the JPA, which is the East-West Corridor E-220 Committee that meets periodically as well on the tour of traffic issues. So with that, I'd ask the council to, I would nominate Ryan for this seat.
There a second?
There's a second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Ryan, for taking this.
At this time, I'll call for a German, but I believe we have refreshments and food. Conference room, over right across from, from the, okay. So all our guests, please stick around here for a few minutes or an hour if you want, and we're going to have food and refreshments for all of you. Thank you very much, and I'll move for a German.